I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We will call.
Mr. Crave here.
I'm here.
Oh, you're here. Senator here.
That's you.
Cummings here.
You're me, too. Records show all board members are present. I have in front of me the proof of proper posting, the agenda. We will roll right into the approval of previous meeting minutes. In your packet we have first the... I'm sorry, this is not over here. We're going to go to the agenda first, so... So... Okay, we've got the agenda presented for this evening. We have two items added on there just to make sure everyone's clear in the new business. I've got a motion on the floor to approve said agenda.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, I've got a motion set, seconded by Ms. Kwame. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries on a seven oh vote. Now we'll roll into the action of approving the meeting minutes from the Policy Committee meeting on Monday, March 4th. Any changes, corrections noted on set meeting minutes?
I'll move to approve those minutes.
And I'll second them.
Got a motion by Ms. Kwame, seconded by Mr. Crave to approve the meeting minutes as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries on a seven oh voice vote. Brings us to the minutes from the regular board meeting Wednesday, March 13th. Any additions or corrections here?
I've got one on the approval of the Baker Tilly of Voice Board, it's a six zero by abstaining on Q B five zero one.
Any other noted corrections, changes?
I'll move to approve those minutes if that changes.
I'll second. Okay, my motion on the floor by Mr. Setz, seconded by Mr. Yurgis with the noted correction. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries on a seven oh voice vote. Brings us finally to the regular board meeting on Wednesday, March 13th in the closed session. Any noted changes or corrections here?
I'll move to approve those minutes as presented. I'll second.
So I've got a motion by Ms. Kwame, seconded by Ms. Cummings to approve said minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those... Motion carries on the seven oh voice vote. That will roll us right into board reports. And I see Mateo Sepulou is present, so you have the floor, sir.
So, lots happened since last weekend. FBLA had state competition. And yesterday, Haley Rockhorst, Cameron Aguero, Jen Spies, Corinne Ratzlauk, and myself all participated. Corinne placed third in her event, and I placed first. Both of us qualified for Nationals. Cameron Ring and I also placed first for the Virtual Business Challenge, and are going to Nationals to be recognized for that as well. So we have three people going to Nationals this year. So FFA, their banquet is currently going on right now in Cafeteria, and they also had drag track to school day before spring break. Ten students participated, and I know that it's always fun and a political attraction. The spring break trip to Italy, nine students went. And I think from the ones I talked to, they enjoyed it and had a lot of fun. And ones that are going to come back next year, will deceive things like that in the future. Term three ended, and it was successful for a lot of students. And both the campuses, term four is also starting this week. Term four, being said, is going to be very quick. And so it's packed very quickly with spring sports going into full swing. Two to three games for baseball and softball every week, along with one to two meets per track the next month. The track meet went well last night, and many runners were yarding. Softball is currently two and two, and baseball is four and oh. Next week, students are testing, and students are testing pre-ACT. And 10th graders testing Tuesday equals 16th. And 9th graders testing Wednesday equals 17th. And any other questions?
Any questions, board members? Very thorough, as usual. Thank you. Thanks, FFA. So we'll roll right into administrator reports. Mr. Bartel will talk on the Day of Silence and the Colteacher Fellowship.
Yeah, so shout out again to our students. They're doing a nice job with our activities and athletics and just, you know, the day-to-day operations of our school. So congratulations to get to Nationals for those students. First, I just want to talk about the Colteacher Fellowship. So that was shared via social media, and we sent out some communication to all families in our community that Emily Schimmelfinnig, who are high school English teacher, was nominated this past fall for the Colteacher Fellowship Award. This program recognizes and supports excellence, teaching excellence and innovation in the state of Wisconsin, which has been going on for many years. She had to go through quite an extensive process, an application process, about her classroom experiences, her values, her leadership, recognitions. She's received trainings, involvement with the entire school community, and much more, along with getting letters of recommendations to be nominated. So in mid-March then, we were notified, Ms. Schimmelfinnig and myself were notified that she did receive that recognition. She is one of the 100 recipients in the state of Wisconsin to receive that award. So that's quite an accomplishment that she did get recognized for that out of a pool of many qualified candidates. So she now is up for Wisconsin Teacher of the Year, which will be announced in the coming months. And she also receives a $6,000 grant for her classroom. And our high school also receives a $6,000 grant for her accomplishments in the classroom. So again, congratulations to Ms. Schimmelfinnig. That's quite an accomplishment. I don't know, did Mr. Henny can speak to that? I don't know the last time we had someone recognized at this level.
Not in a long time, maybe 10 years.
So, yeah, so quite an accomplishment that she did do that. Questions at all?
What does it cover?
What does it cover?
Yeah.
That's a good question. So they sent out when she receives the award. We have to, she had to acknowledge that she received the award. They're sending by the end of the school year. They're sending out a specific layout of what it has to cover. Initially, the general response would be just classroom, whether it's supplies, needs in the classroom that she has. And same with our school. They don't have it laid out quite yet, but we'll be getting information there soon. Be more than happy when that happens, if you share that out with the board as well. Then I just also want to talk briefly about the Day of Silence on Friday. So I want to give a little background first about it, and then talk about our process at the school here and what we've taken. So what is the National Day of Silence? So the Day of Silence is the National Day of Action, started by college students in 1996. It's a call to action to protect students who are LGBTQIA+. There are hundreds of thousands of students and more than 8,000 K-12 schools that partake in the Day of Silence, again, which is this Friday, April 12th. So it is the largest student-led, one of the largest student-led actions in the United States. So the reason behind having a Day of Silence, so just some data that goes along with it, and this is taken from our DPI, Department of Public Construction, provides a lot of data with this through surveys. So a recent national school climate survey found that about 90% of students who identify as LGBTQIA+ have experienced verbal, sexual, or physical harassment at schools. And that 30% reported missing at least one day per month out of fear for their personal safety. So the National Day of Silence just brings us recognition, awareness to bullying and harassment, and then calling up students that do identify as that. In the past, in Waterloo, so it hasn't happened recently, but they have, we have had it in Waterloo in the past. This is the first year since I've been in the high school, since I've been the principal of the high school that students in our GSA group have wanted to partake in it. So previous years of being in high school, it's not been brought to my attention. This has a student-driven group, and they wanted to partake in that. So again, it has happened in Waterloo probably 10 years ago or so, or maybe a little bit longer, and this is the first time in the most recent years. So what does it look like in schools? So it doesn't look any different than any other day. Teachers are teaching, students are learning, there's instruction going on. The only thing is, it's completely optional, students that want to partake in that, when they get to school, they can donate a dollar, and they will get a sticker so that the staff are aware that they are participating in the day. They get a pen and a notepad, and that's how they communicate for the day. If the students still have to learn, again, it's completely optional. It's more of those students that are participating, they get that sticker so the staff is aware of it. All school activities run as normal. In math class, we're learning about math, in science, we're learning about science in a normal school day. So how this started, prior to spring break, the GSA group who meets every Wednesday during lunch with our advisor, Mr. Campbell, they talked about it. Mr. Campbell gave me a communication that they're interested in doing this. I brought it to the Advent team. We all said we fully support it. So we, then, I met with the GSA group right before spring break and gave them the green light, like, yes, we support this. We will go with this day on Friday, April 12th. I did tell them that we were going to be proactive to make students aware of what the day is. So on Monday during flex time, non-instructional time, flex time is kind of a catch-all, where we make announcements, give any updates. And this is when we did a 10-minute presentation about what is the Day of Silence? What does it look like? There was a video that we showed with it, the terms that associate with the LGBTQIA+ community. So students are aware that there are terms that they may hear in passing with students in the community when they go out and about traveling, just so they're aware of terms. Again, it was all about awareness and being proactive so that on Friday, if they see students participating in this, they have an understanding of why they are doing it and the meaning behind it. And again, trying to be proactive to avoid any possible disrespectful behavior. The whole point of it was to be respectful to one another on that day. Students participating, being respectful to students that maybe aren't participating, and students that aren't participating, being respectful to those students that are. So again, it was about awareness and being respectful on Monday, and that's why we talked about it, to be proactive. And that was the plan for Friday. So again, I wanted to provide a background about what the meaning is of the day, and what the process looked like, that it was all student-driven from our GSA group, and then what it will look like. Are there any questions from the board about what I talked about?
I've got one question, I'm just curious. I don't know if you can answer or not, but any idea of how many schools participate in this?
So from the data that I had, just looking on our Deepak website, it's just the Day of Silence, when they publish it. So there's over 8,000 K-12 schools that participate on their website. That's what it notifies.
Any other questions, board members? All right. Thank you, Mr. Bartel. We'll move right along, we'll go to Ms. Zina to talk on the board. You have the floor.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. I have the opportunity to talk to you about our state testing forward exam. We are doing the board exam in grades three through 10. Grades four and eight have Science and Social Studies in addition to reading and math. At the intermediate and middle school level, we began testing a few weeks before our spring break. We had decided to do testing in the content areas so we would not disrupt our schedules. And the feedback that I have gotten so far has been that teachers really like it. They like testing math in the math classrooms, ELA in ELA classrooms, and so on and so forth. We are pretty much done testing ELA. There's a few students that had extended their vacations before spring break, so we will do some makeup testing with those students. We are completely done at the middle school level with social studies. Science is this week, so our eighth grade students have completed Sessions one and two, and they will do Session three tomorrow. Then next week, all five eight will do math in their math classrooms. And that gives us an extra week. The end of the testing window is April 18th, so that will give us a week to do some makeup testing. So the kids are doing really well with it. I have been testing students that have been absent or are coming in as our virtual students. We are required to test the students that attend Jedi also, and it's going pretty well. Are there any questions on the board exam?
Not hearing any.
All right. It's a big part of our spring, and I'm proud of the teachers and the students for putting their best efforts forward.
Thank you, Ms. Zina. We'll move to Ms. Beacon to talk on summer school. Still muted.
There, better?
Yes.
I'm super excited about summer school. This year, we've added up a bunch of new classes. The teachers have, you know, decide, or they created some classes and told us which ones they wanted to teach this summer. Sarah Deppi and I met and created the handbook that you guys have. We've added to our older students, we've added a whole bunch of new classes. Book to Film class, a book club with a snack lab, coding, a computer coding class, STEM challenges for our older students, piano lesson, guitar, music mixing and matching, which is like using some software to create your own song. And then, of course, we have spring and fitness and math classes as well for our students, but those are some of the new ones for our fourth through eighth grade. And then we also have for our younger kids, we've added No Wisconsin class. We've added a World of Disney class, a nature class to go in, a gardening class to go with our garden, simple snacks, garden, I mean diamond arts, puzzles galore. So we're just really excited about some of our really, our new classes that we're offering to kids. We also this year added, because at our 4K night, we had a lot, we surveyed the parents to see who might be interested in having our new coming 4K kids into our classroom, I mean, having them come for summer school. And we had a really strong, the parents really wanted to be us to be able to offer that class. So we are also going to be having a class, I think we're calling it Exploring the Way to Poor 4K. So we're really excited about that new class. Some of the other things, too, that we're doing, we also have some opportunities, some teachers writing some classes that might be happening outside of our regular hours for summer school. And so they're still, we're still in development with some of those classes. And as those come available to parents, we'll be sending those out as special flyers saying, hey, are you interested in maybe this camp or, you know, that, or something like that? So we have lots of opportunities. We're trying to add some more opportunities for our parents to have, for summer school, to build their summer school program.
Any questions, board members?
Summer school, yeah. Yeah, Holly, when?
We all have the handbook, it's online now, it's available to parents. We started signing, sorry, I should have said this earlier. We started signing up for summer school classes this week. And like I said, I couldn't have done any of this work without Sarah Deppi. She's instrumental, and then, of course, that is so helpful in getting people registered so that process happens really seamlessly, so...
Holly, Sarah Cummings has a question for you.
Okay, hi, Sarah.
Hi. When can you start registering? Parents were asking that they couldn't find the link. They went to Skyward, so I was just, I was wondering.
Yep, and it should be to sign up, we started cleaning up, I think, yesterday at noon, so if you have any questions or if parents ask you, I've told them in my score that I sent out monthly to contact Sarah Deppi. She emailed her in the office. She can help you with any troubleshooting with Skyward. But it should be good to go. We've been registering kids, Sarah wasn't here today, but we've been registering kids since Tuesday, Monday, I think Tuesday afternoon, so...
All right, cool, thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions?
I just have a question. I don't know if you could recall or not, Holly, but what was our attendance last year? Do you recall?
Well, I think we were, I think we were just over 100, like, just over 100 kids. I don't know if Suzie knows the exact acronym of the word. But we're shooting for, we have a goal this year, this summer, of trying to get at least 165, you know, kids. We have so many teachers who are interested in teaching summer school this summer that we have, and these new classes, so we're really shooting for some higher numbers for our summer school. I'm sad that, I'm sad that the Fourth of July just happened to be that weird sort of Thursday. So otherwise, we would have had a nice full three weeks. But with that Fourth of July, it's just those three days that week.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Beacon. Brings us to Ms. Armitral to talk about the S E B screener.
Yeah. Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Perfect. So I'm excited to give you an update on our S E B screener. It's a social and emotional behavior screener. This screener is actually called the SABR, and that stands for Social, Academic, Emotional, Behavior Risk Screener. I believe on pages 39, 40 of the board packet, you have some information about SABR, SABR as well as the parent letter that was sent home. So this particular screener consists of two parts. One that's completed by the student, if they're in second grade or older, and then one that's completed by the teacher. And this screener determines various strengths, as well as various needs in social, academic, and emotional behaviors. So to start this endeavor, we, and I brought this up a couple of months ago, I think, and just sort of mentioned it, but we asked for staff volunteers to pilot this. So we have two teachers, her building level, that volunteered, as well as one special educator and one interventionist. And they volunteered to do the training, piloting, and be part of the implementation team. They're going to pilot with their particular class of students, so that's about 100 students. In addition to that team, we have our Student Services Department, as well as our Building Administration, that all participated in a three-hour training right before spring break on March 29th. And the families of the students who will be taking the screener did receive a letter explaining the screener, including the questions, as well as an opt-out option, and again, that's in your board packet. So our plan is to pilot this screener with the 100 students and those teachers, and then bring building-level teams together to look at the data, debrief our, and determine our next steps. Again, our ultimate goal is to be able to implement this screener K-12, again, to build on our strengths, as well as ensure tiered systems of support for students in need. Once this occurs, our implementation team is then going to sit down and decide how we want to kind of enroll this implementation. Do we want to keep it small for the 24 or 25 school year? Would we be ready for full implementation? So that's going to be up to the team that I mentioned. So that's where we are with our S E B screener. Any questions for me?
Any questions? I'm not hearing any, so thank you, Ms. Armitral.
Absolutely, thank you.
And we will now move to Mrs. Ghul to talk about the 2020 or 2025 budget.
Yeah, so I don't know the number of students I'm sure, but I know there's nine at T V for last summer school. Just because I look at it more than minutes, but I will get that to you any minute, too.
Perfect.
So going over the budget for the 24 and 25 fiscal year. We'll start with the purpose of our budget forecast. And that's to kind of recognize enrollment trends and the budgetary disability impact of those. Understand the revenue trends, including the property tax impact. Understand the expenditure trends. Realize the future impact of current fiscal decisions, and explore the outcomes of the different data scenarios. So some of the assumptions I made when working on this budget for the 24, 25 school year is the enrollment, and you kept the projection scenarios pretty much close to actual. Factoring the board approved salary increases for that 2,400 for certified staff, 75 cents for hourly, and 4% for co-curricular. Health insurance increase, we don't have that back yet. I estimate a 1%. I'm being really hopeful. Dental costs, we're not seeing, we're not forecasting any increase there. And for the non-personal costs, right now I'm budgeting, we don't have no increase like transportation, some of the utilities. The 24, 25 revenues are based on a 325 per student increase in the revenue limit formula and state special category at 32%. So overall, the budget decreased by a little over 508,000. Just no surprise because of the fiscal cliff that Dister's only talking about with the SIR funds ending. Current balanced fund budget right now is $11,488,136. To kind of get there, we've gone, I've gone light in some of the curriculum purchases, but that's mainly because we did a lot of curriculum purchases this fiscal year with the SIR money, SIR 3. And then gone to the light on the maintenance projects and some equipment upgrades, with that making the balanced budgets. We had an increase for state aid, for 40, state aid, $46,000. And that's partially because of some of the monies that flow through in the poor people. But we saw revenue decrease in $527,000 because of the SIR, the way the school basement to health grant changed. And then the Title I C migrant grant money, we're not doing this year. We're going to participate, but we're not going to be the ones doing that. So that's kind of where we're at right now. It's, you know, always changing, we're always watching it. Future steps, we're going to use enrollment projections to predict future enrollment scenarios, estimate revenue increases based on those scenarios, and estimate the expenditures based on the data we're pulling in from some of our vendors and that, and then just analyze accordingly. Any questions on that? I did print out the 100 and 24 pages, I thought that would be too much, but that's more right now. I'm pretty happy with that.
Any questions?
Yeah.
About the transportation, are, we have a contract that I'm looking at this year. Are we looking at different vendors, or are we staying with Fullerson, or?
We, yeah.
So we just, we've been talking with them in the last couple of weeks. So they had an option for a third year with us, a 6% increase. And so we've asked them to award us that contract. And then after this next year, we'll be up for renegotiations again.
Well, if you think of it, it's a pretty contacted deal, Paul.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Ghul. Brings us to Mr. Henny for an update on tutoring and the Scholarship Supper.
Yep, just wanted to give you a real quick update on tutoring. And a big thank you to Matt Karnick, who's been making it all happen behind the scenes. What we're really trying to do is make an online bridge for staff and for students to connect and have opportunities to tutor. We have eight teachers that are currently participating in the program, and we've administered over 50 hours of tutoring to dozens of different students. We're hoping that that continues to grow right up and through the end of the year. If you remember, that's being paid for by the Get Kids Ahead Grant. It's been really well received by both students and the community. And so we really like what's happening there. There's lots of kids getting the extra help that they need, and they can do it on their time, and teachers can do it on their schedules. And so, again, we feel it's going very well. Scholarship supper, many of you attended the scholarship supper and/or donated, so we really appreciate everybody's support for that. We serve right around 200 people chicken and prime rib dinners. We served right around two hundred people, um, chicken and prime rib dinners. Uh, we had lots of people that, uh, helped with the supper, and then lots of people that donated to the endowment fund. Um, and I would say that it's been a very, um, great success in the first initial year of the endowment fund, and that scholarship supper was, you know, our big kickoff event to kind of bring attention to that, and we're looking to continue those efforts. Um, most likely in May here, uh, we'll ask the board to, you know, make a decision on, uh, maybe dispersments from that fund then for this year's senior class. Uh, we, we really didn't know what would happen with this year's graduating fest, 'cause we didn't have any money yet. Um, now we've got a little bit of money, and so, uh, the board will need to make a decision, you know, if we're gonna continue to grow that endowment until we reach our goal, or if you wanna start with, um, this year's seniors right away and, and provide some support to, to that group. So be thinking about that, and then we'll pick that up in a minute. Any questions?
Is there like a committee for this endowment? I mean, do they have recommendations of what the dispersment should be?
Yep, um, so nothing has been set formally, but, you know, token committee at this point in time has been administration and school board. So if we wanna expand that, and, and we've had some discussions with donors about that, uh, because some of our people that we're talking with that could potentially be bigger donors would like to maybe serve on the committee also. So I think, you know, some of those things for the board, you know, are yet to decide, but right now the board is the committee and, you know, along with the administration. And, uh, we can look to expand that if you want going forward.
Uh, one question, uh, I assume we're obviously open to taking any and all donations. Um, is it still, do we have a, uh, social media presence or anything where you're trying to secure more donations, or is it still just the school reaching out?
Um, well, we hit people pretty hard the last few months, and so we've kind of quieted down a little bit just to kind of give people a break, but, um, we, we, we wanna have a sponsored board, and so we're gonna start back up with that sponsored board and then solicit donations and plan our, our next event, so. Just, you know, trying to strike that balance between getting the word out and asking people for support, but yet not, um, bothering them too much for that as well.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Henny. Um, we'll move right into the approval of bills and vouchers. We have the treasurer's report, the listings of dispersments through March thirty-first, and the district receipts from March. Are there any unanswered questions regarding to the aforementioned three reports you have in your packet? I guess I just have one, and I apologize if I've been asking for the meeting, but I see we show a small, just, uh, some small losses in the food service. Just curious if there's anything trending there to be concerned with, or?
No, we just had some beer expensive today, but that should come for the end of the month.
Okay. Any other questions?
One thing I noticed, automatic fire system inspection, annual sprinkler, and fire suppression. That, six hundred and ninety-two dollars, that's for the entire district complex, the total bill?
That's just for our sprinkler system. So that's a, you know, a state code we have to have it inspected. So every year you pay your six hundred dollars and they inspect it, and we're good for another year.
All right, so that does not include any water, uh, backflow valves or any?
No, our backflow preventers also get a separate inspection, and our fire alarm system is a separate inspection, so. In total, we spend thousands of dollars a year in required inspections of those things.
And you'll, you'll see some more.
Just as the year goes on.
I thought this was too good to be true.
Yeah, and you'll see some more, I'm sure, coming as the second, semi-annual bill comes through here before year end.
All right. Fair enough.
Any other questions?
I approve to approve the treasurer's report, the superintendent's list of dispersments, and the review of the district's receipts from March as presented.
I'll second that motion.
Oh, he, he, yeah, too late. Sorry, Mr. Sets got you, but. Uh, I've got a motion. Thank you for that clear motion, and Kwame, seconded by Mr. Sets, and that is a roll call vote.
Great, yes.
Kwame, yes.
Kwame, yes.
Schneider, yes.
Sets, yes.
Kelly, yes.
Darius, yes.
All right. Moving right along, legislative updates. Anything any board members or admin would like to share regarding legislative updates? All right, here are none. Move right along. So, uh, we go to announcements. Uh, as stated, I think listed on the agenda, we do, so we're at that time of year, the elections may be conducted, and, and we will welcome our new board member, Jeremy Dolphin, at our next meeting. But, uh, as that happens, we also have to recognize someone who's in our presence this evening, Mr. Sets, who has served on the school board for eighteen years, I was told. Okay, it's a long time. So I'd like to read, uh, we, Mr. Sets received a card here, and I'd just like to read that out real quick, and it says, "Jim, best to you on your retirement from the Waterloo School Board. It was enjoyable to know and work with you over the years. Your service to this community has been great. You attended school in Waterloo, stayed after graduation, worked here, raised your family, had wonderful kids you sent to the school, coached, participated in school-community activities, and served on the board for a long time. You are to be commended. Not many are so dedicated and committed to their community. Best to you always again." And that's put down to Thomas. So, I think that kind of sums it up, uh, your dedication. So, uh, to commemorate this evening, we have, uh, on behalf of the school district, a plaque to present you. Has an inscription here, "Thank you, Mr. Sets, for his service," but thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you for the comments, and, uh, kind of, there's a lot of good things, some things are, decisions are made kind of tough and not always agreeable with, uh, superintendent on things and anybody else, but seem to work our ways through them, so. All I can say to the board is good luck and keep moving us forward. I'd say a special thanks to Beth and Suzie, too. You've been great.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Don't be a stranger either.
You know, she, she has some committees coming up.
Annual meeting.
Yeah.
Uh, any other announcements this evening?
Just real quick, I wanna say I'll send an email to the board, but on Monday, May thirteenth, we are a top ten banquet, and I wanna invite school board to that as well. Again, the top ten banquets are top ten students based off of their GPA, cumulative GPA from ninth grade through twelfth grade. Um, so again, Monday, May thirteenth at six P M., I'll send an invite, and by the first Friday in May, I'll need a response if you are coming in, how many people will be tabled for all our school board.
Thank you. Move right along. We will go to public input. Does anyone wish to provide public input this evening? Okay, so before you start, uh, just a reminder with public input, uh, we ask that you, of course, let us know who you are. Publicly state your name, so it can be reported. Uh, we ask that you speak, uh, solely on your own accord, and we are certainly not allowed to discuss any type of personnel issue within the school as we have a discussion. So with that, I would like you to floor.
Uh, Charlene Chopin, resident and former teacher in the district. I just wanted to say I commend you, the district and the administration for supporting the students of the LGBTQ plus community and beginning the process of support and healing for those students. The LGBTQ plus is a protected population and thus deserves a safe and place that is free of bullying as well as a safe, as well as safe and caring adults, um, to whom that they can come and, um, find a place where they can go to for support. Having worked in the district, I can assure you that the staff at Waterloo do provide those safe places and that there are many staff here that the students do feel that they can go to for that safe place. Um, Kim being one, Sean being one, um, my husband also being one. Um, so I also am a parent of a child who's a member of the LGBTQ plus, and while she was in school, she also was in the district that provided that safe place. So I truly commend you for, um, offering education about the Day of Silence and just giving the staff a vivid for that day. So I truly, truly, um, commend you for that support of our students and our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to provide public input this evening? All right. We will move right along. Moving to new business, uh, action item A. First item on the docket is the, an introduction to the LGBTQ plus community educational video for high school. Um, 'cause we don't have any details in our packet, I'll turn it over to Mr. Henny. Uh, we did receive information from Mr. Bartelt, so, um, if you wanna clarify what we're looking to make a motion.
Yeah, and if you, um, for those of you following along at home, so originally the first two items on the agenda that address the Day of Silence and the LGBTQ, uh, video that was shown to high school students, somebody were not on the agenda, um, when we received feedback from the community, um, some, um, in support of what took place and some in opposition of what took place. Um, we wanted to make sure that the board had an opportunity to weigh in on that. As with most things nowadays, they get run right to the top, and the board has the final say on, on these things. And so we're just looking tonight, you know, for our further guidance on how you want this handled in the district. Obviously, we can't go back and change what happened Monday, but we can do it differently if you'd like us to do it differently. Um, we certainly, you know, we're looking for some specific things, but that's not necessarily how you have to handle it as a board. You know, a permission to, you know, continue to, to show that, uh, seven-minute video, um, to either students that were absent or in future years, just as an educational tool for bringing awareness to, um, that community and the Day of Silence, and then whether or not, um, you give your stamp approval for the Day of Silence on Friday, April twelfth. So, um, I certainly, certainly can answer more specific questions about any of those things as well as Mr. Bartelt. Um, the administration's in support of both of those things, but we understand that we work for you and the community, so, uh, do you have the final say?
Well, you know, I mean, I'm not against the LGBTQ community educational thing at all. I have feedback from a lot of certain people. I guess what I'm hearing is from the community is that we might just be aware of when this video being showed, their children, the permission slips, such as that kind of thing, and I'm not hearing anything to read back that what's important for us. That's my suggestion, is this like an informational law for parents first?
I have just a clarification question, because we have it listed as two agenda items, but I believe I was told previously, but, so the, the video, the introduction, the information, it's, it's on an optional basis, is that right? Or are we just showing the video?
Well, yeah, let me take some, a second to explain that, and, and I understand why this isn't necessarily, um, always common knowledge, 'cause we don't reiterate it probably enough, but, you know, in the district, um, you know, and we have policies that support this, that students always have a right to not participate in an assignment and complete an alternative assignment if, if it doesn't, you know, align with their religion or their values or, or those kinds of things. And so students can, and, and we have students that do this in the building daily, so students are well aware of that. Um, but they can choose to, you know, not participate in and complete something different. This is a little bit unique because it isn't necessarily part of the curriculum, and it wasn't necessarily part of a class. It was during, you know, that flex time, which we kind of use as a catch-all to, to do various things. Um, so it's not like, um, you know, we've had a change in curriculum, or all of a sudden we're adding something new to the curriculum, but this was something that, like Mr. Bartelt said, was shown to the students to bring awareness, especially being proactive for, um, Friday, the Day of Silence that has been planned. So, um, students can and do always have the option to participate or not participate. Uh, they, they can be asked then or are, are asked to complete an alternative assignment, and that's usually worked through with the student and parent, so that, um, if it's with what they're looking for.
Whose idea, where did this come from? Like, uh, uh, let me put it back first. Did it get sent out as an email to people? Was it part of a class that people attended, and are there certain people attended and not?
No, it was during the flex time. So every, for every kid is, what I understand, saw the video, right?
Students that were in flex in grades nine through twelve.
Saw the video.
So high school kids saw, every high school kid saw this video in flex time?
More or less, yes.
Okay. Whose idea was it to bring it to flex time?
My, our, at, our admin team, myself, um, it was students that had the idea of wanting to participate in this day. So, um, when I met with the group, I told them that I want to be proactive and make students aware of the day and everything that goes along with LGBTQ, and, um, to give an opportunity to raise awareness. So that's why we decided to do it during flex time, so it didn't take up instructional time during the day.
Who found the video and how was determined this is, this is the video that we're hearing?
Go ahead. Yeah, so, uh, we have our, our G S A group that meets, and we have staff that participate in that. So, um, there's a staff member that said that, that they'd be willing to help out with putting together some presentation for it, and they did, and, um, wanted to get it better through myself, which I approved, and I asked our admin team, is this something that we can, and would it all be supportive, and there was support within our team as well.
Did it strike you as being, that this might be controversial?
We were in support of showing it to inform students and make them aware.
That's not the question that I answered.
I understand, and I'm telling you that, that we never talked about any parent request or anything at that point because we're, took the proactive approach.
So, you're unaware that something like this might be controversial, or you don't have an opinion on it, or you didn't consider whether it was? Which of those options?
I'll, I'll say we, our admin team, all talked through it to ensure that we.
Was there anybody on the admin team that voiced concerns over the controversial nature of this?
No. Well, I think we all discussed that it was something that, hence you saw it on the board agenda that you got in your packet last Friday, that, you know, this is something that we wanna make the board aware of, because you may have to answer questions in the community or you may receive calls, um, about it, so.
But it never crossed your mind that maybe we wanna run this by the board before we show it to kids?
I think in hindsight, yeah, I mean, I think that would have been a good idea for us to.
Here's, here's what disturbs me. If the community at large actually watched this video and were able to weigh in ahead of time, I think you'd be shocked at where the community is and how controversial what you're going to really is. There, there are whole aspects of this I will hardly agree with them. I think are great messages for a kid. And then there's sprinkled in with that what I would charitably describe as indoctrination. And it's offensive. Let me ask you this. Are you in favor of giving kids puberty blockers, blockers for a little the age of eighteen?
Which has nothing.
Really? Because they talk about it in the video. That's what transition is. Are you unaware of that, or do you disagree, or am I wrong?
I'm not gonna get into the, the politics of all this right now.
Well, you just, you, when you sent the video all to all the kids. How can you not grasp that? That at the very least, this is controversial. That there is. grasp that? That at the very least, this is controversial, that there are states literally passing laws making it a crime to do that to kids. We happen to not be one of those states.
I think we hear you, Bill. We hear you, and I think, you know, if we could go back and change it, we would do some things differently. But the board and the district does have a GSA committee, and therefore you have, as a district, condoned these types of discussions among student organizations. And our goal was not to spread propaganda or indoctrinate people. Our goal was to bring awareness to this day that a student organization, a student club that's approved by the school board, was planned for Friday so that we didn't have another blackface incident, didn't have another incident where we're suspending kids for two days because we didn't teach them about it or we didn't tell them about it. We kept it very short. It was a seven-minute video. It was a short time period. I understand it's controversial. If you tell us that we can't do it going forward, I think we'll be disappointed in that, but we hear you.
What's GSA's name?
Gender Sexuality Alliance.
Okay. So if we had, say, a group of Christian students that met and we approved the meeting of this Christian club, and they wanted, they all met together and they wanted to espouse their basic Christian belief that performing homosexual acts is a sin, which is a widely-held Christian belief, not by all Christians, but by a good number of them. But if this group wanted to do something like that and they wanted to show a video basically telling all the other kids in the school that this act is a sin, would that give you a moment of pause? I, as a Christian, that would give me a moment of pause because I would feel bad for the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender kids out there. I would think that that would be a little bit offensive then. But that never really crossed your mind because we don't have some regular group out there, do we?
We don't have a board approved.
See, this makes me think, makes me question whether or not we should have the group. If you guys can't police the group well enough to understand that this might be a problem, it gives me a moment of pause. Now, I admit, I may be the only one on the school board that believes this. But I gotta tell you, I think the members of the community would be large numbers of them. We would find this problematic.
I think what this did is it did another division, unfortunately. I don't think it brought awareness as much as you want it wanted it to. I think it brought a division, this group versus this group, which we shouldn't have that. We should all be one. We should be good people. It's really what it comes down to. But I think it really did drive that division again. Again, we've been trying to climb out of being divided.
How does it create a division?
Because I, because I don't think that parents agreed with it, and they didn't know about it. They didn't know about the video. They didn't have a chance to talk to the kids and say, you know, this is coming, maybe giving them the awareness to provide that. I'm not against it at all. I'm just saying I think we needed, we needed to give that opportunity to the parents to decide. I mean, we write an email in eighth grade to let them know that we're going to have puberty class or talk about sex or talk about SDBs. Why wouldn't we send an email to let them know we're providing this email, this video? And then I didn't know anything about it. So I guess, as board member, I would have liked to know that this was being shown because I'm getting calls and texts and emails and I'm like, what? I don't know what you're talking about. So I guess I would have liked to be prepared a little bit, too. And again, it's not that I don't agree with it. It's just the fact that I would have liked to be prepared. And I think that's how the parents, some parents are feeling, too. And some parents don't agree with it. I mean, you're going to have that. You're going to have people that don't agree. You're going to have people that agree. You're going to, you know, you're going to have all that. It's fine. But like I said, I think that there's, that's my own thing.
Yeah, I wouldn't agree with Sarah. So I mean, forefront, having it all, letting parents know that this video is going to go out, I think would have went a long ways. Instead of trying to play catch-up on the tail end, I mean, I'm getting phone calls Monday at three o'clock in the afternoon. What's this all about? What are you going to be doing? I don't know anything about this. I'm going to look into this. I watched the video and I was like, oh, see, an issue with this. I think we should have forewarned it to the parents.
I also think, too, that quite often we hear about this community, but we don't hear about any other community. It's kind of the same thing in the library. We see 12 books, but we don't see 12 books about another lifestyle. So I think a lot of it goes back to basic, just good human respect. And I know that's what the video ended up saying. But why, it's kind of like stirring up a hornet's nest and say, I'll go back in there. And, you know, just have good, honest respect. I think that's just posed without saying.
If the, if the video had talked about treating people with respect in that community as a generality, I have zero issue with it. In fact, I'd be a huge proponent of that. I remember there was a kid in my high school class that, I won't give out his name, but they used to call him, his last name sort of, they used to call him Jeep Girl because he was a femen. He acted a feminine. And young, almost like girls, and he was some kind of a guy's guy. And I remember thinking to myself how cruel that people were to him. And we are a vastly better society today than we were then because my basic understanding is that type of behavior is no longer tolerated. It was tolerated when I was a kid, and I remember how cruel that was. So that message is indeed a good message, but sprinkled in with that, you threw the transgender stuff in there for a reason that frankly escapes me. Moreover, there are large numbers of the gay community that don't appreciate the fact that they're lumped in with the transgender movement. And you're treating them like they're a monolithic movement, which is awfully insulting to a lot of people that look at themselves as gay. And then I ask basic, easy questions about, this is, this is stuff that we saw in the video, that you're not even prepared to answer because you can see how much of an issue that it's going to create. Here's another one I would just throw out there for you. If we're supposed to treat people that are, that identify as, that are men that identify as female, we're supposed to treat them by respect, by acknowledging the fact that they are essentially women, wouldn't we not then allow them to compete in women's sports? Well, the video doesn't exactly address that, does it? It kind of stays away from it. But that's inherent in offering that as a respect for those folks. There are whole segments of the community that, of large portions of the country now believe that that's the case, regardless of the fact of whether I think it's dangerous or creepy or whatever. It's a huge controversial point that you've now waded into for reasons that frankly escape me.
Would you mind if I said something? My name is Kim Noonan, and I work here in Waterloo. I supervise the study halls and an online class in the library. So I have gotten to know basically every child in this building. I'm also part of the GSA group. I go every Wednesday and have lunch with kids and our mentor Nate Campbell. I'm also a mother of two gay children, and they are 38 years old. And when they were growing up, they had nothing. They had no support but the support of their family. And I saw my children be ridiculed and teased and bullied, and my heart went out to the student that we lost because they weren't accepted. They weren't accepted at home, but they felt accepted here. And if we don't protect these students and give them some reason, these students just want to have a club, just like choir club or art club or Patriots club. They want people to see them for who they are. They're not asking them to change their lifestyle. They're just asking to be accepted and loved and respected as who they are. They wanted to take a dollar for a sticker. They wanted to give that money to another organization that supports the education of what, of what they're going through and who they are. And I think, I think we need to be better educated as adults, as a staff, and as a community. Because I see more and more students take their lives because they aren't accepted. And I, I think we were just trying to, to support them. Sure, maybe there, maybe it would have been a good idea to send something home. But I know that they are going to be, it's been a hard process to come back together as a group after a student took his life. And we were maybe a group of two or three students. And today, when we met, we were a group of 12. So I just, I just ask you, as a board, as parents, as community members, to think about the overall, we need to educate ourselves more on the whole thing. These students just want to be accepted.
Oh, I agree with you on that.
They're not. They are not. I see it every day. Snide comments.
Why are those children not being punished for this action? Brian, do you ever comment to me? We have a, I don't like bullying, obviously, from the state.
We do, and those students have been reported and they've been talked to and-
And they still continue doing it?
They do.
Is this the case, Brian?
I can't speak to that. I don't think it would be appropriate to speak to individual student matters in an open board session.
You don't have a very fond opinion of the parents of the board that you live their own life through?
I'm sorry?
You don't have a very high opinion of the parents, I assume, of the students that live.
I think we need to stop it.
Why did you say that?
Because you said that they weren't supported at home. That's what you just said. Did you not say that?
I did. They were not supported at home.
Okay. You're just maligning the parents of the community, you know?
I'm sorry?
You're just maligning the parents of your community.
No, I didn't, I didn't come here to, I just wanted to express to you that these students, they want to be accepted. They want to go about their day like everybody else.
Do you think that I'm opposed to that?
I didn't say you were. I don't think you did at all. I think you made a nice point up from the opposition, from yours, too. And I think that we should respect Ms. Noonan for her comments.
Thank you. Is there any other board member who wishes to weigh in this time who hasn't spoken? Sure, let's get to that. Is there, would you like to speak at all, Susan?
No, I mean, I don't have an opposition to us providing an education. I do think the video has opportunity, and I would encourage the administration to put an alternative video and then would encourage us to provide at least knowledge to parents that the education is going to be offered. But I don't have an opposition to us providing education to our students about the LGBTQ community.
Okay. And I would, I haven't spoken, but I would echo the sentiment of Ms. Kwame. My comments pretty much verbatim. This is a school. It's what we do. We educate people. So to get to Jim's question or point, we've got two motions here. The first one is the, I guess, the approval of the introduction to the LGBTQ community educational video for the high school. So I've heard a couple of things that I believe we want to weigh in on, and that would be a better warning in the future for communication piece to parents, students moving forward. But, so it's my understanding that the video has already been shown, so I don't know, that would be- Can't erase your minds if you've watched it or had the option to watch it. So it would be more so moving forward, but I guess I'm open for thoughts, board members, if you want to phrase something. I don't know that there's much to approve other than give direction to the administrative team in regards to future correspondence when the video is going to show. I heard move on, forewarning.
Yeah, just notification and then to Susan's part, maybe like, would you video, see if we can get it better? I would just say-
Sure, maybe an alternative.
Yes.
From what was shown.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other commentary? It's already done, so we can just, we could set action that says before a video is shown again.
I looked at the board review at halftime.
That would be a passion item. Any, any videos of X nature, the board would review ahead of time? Seems like a good motion.
Okay. I would like to word that. So prior to reviewing for high school students, the board would refer to first view said video with the administrative team on future educational videos of this nature. Is that something you would garner support?
Of what nature? You've got to be very specific if you're going to have a motion.
Should be. Would you like it specific to the next time the introduction to LGBTQ plus community educational video is to be shown, the board members will rescreen that video with the administrative team. Did I get it done? I will make that motion. All right, so I put a motion on the floor, seconded by Mr. Yurgis. Are all members clear on said motion? We're all, excuse me?
Other videos, are you concerned with any controversy if we're going to make that decision?
So we've made, the current motion is specifically for the community educational video for this, for the introduction to the LGBTQ plus community. Okay? Is everyone clear on the motion? All of those in favor? Post? I, I opposed. I, if I heard correctly, I had two opposed. So that motion will pass in a five-two vote. Brings us to our next action item, the Day of Silence on Friday, April twelfth.
I have a question. Sean, in the Day of Silence, are teachers able to participate as well in the Day of Silence? Or just the students?
So we haven't addressed that. I was kind of waiting for tonight. When we talked about it at our staff meetings on Friday before spring break, it was all student discussion about it. I think it got brought to my attention on Tuesday, asked some questions. I know it was coming here to a board meeting as well. But, um, I'll be honest, I know technology can do a lot with, with, and still be teaching. So, um, I know it's hard to get through eighty-six minutes of class full without talking at the same time and doing instruction. So there's been no teachers that have come to me saying they are participating and not talking for the day, but they are supporting the day. So I was waiting for direction to see if we were having the day and was going to, I talked to Mr. Henning about that too. And we were gonna communicate out tomorrow, um, you know, what that was like in classroom with a teacher as well.
And then I guess I have another question, sorry.
Yeah.
Um, do you think that if someone chooses to not get a sticker in the Day of Silence, do you think that this is going to cause, like, the people that have stickers, well, they don't support us?
No, we, in our...
That's like my biggest thing. People that don't have stickers, people that have stickers, no support.
That was talked about specifically in today in our, in the GSA meeting as well. And talking through with our advisor, that's been talked through with students a lot in our group. And I've talked with students a lot the last two days, just, you know, about Friday to get feedback and their thoughts as well. And students have been very respectful regardless one way or the other. So I honestly don't foresee that happening at all.
And what if it does? So I'm just, what if, what if, like, someone says, well, Sarah, your daughter didn't have a sticker on. She doesn't, that doesn't mean she didn't support us. And then, and then does it go as far as, like, you know, I don't know. Like, I'm just trying to think ahead of what could happen because, again, you know, your biggest thing is, is education and, and they want to be loved. And so are they gonna feel loved with people that don't have a sticker on?
I think they're worried more about being picked on because they're wearing the sticker.
I just, and, and I don't want them to get bullied even more than on Friday because of the Day of Silence. So I'm trying to think about it on all angles because I'm like, I mean, I would have loved a Day of Silence when that, he took his life. You know, I would have loved to see that, or nine eleven, or, you know, monumental days, like. So I guess I was just wondering why it came up now of Day of Silence, like, is it?
It's a, it's a national day.
National day.
It's a national day.
I think the GSA kids would like to see that their school's supportive.
Okay.
I just had those questions.
With, anybody, this demonstration is the Day of Silence, April twelfth. Are we gonna, what happens when the next group, you know, builds one? If another group wants to do a Day of Silence for their class, is it gonna be?
Well, we do, other groups have days. Like, we have Jeans for Troops through our Patriots Club. That's just one example. So, I mean, we, we have other days that we dedicate to groups and clubs when they do things. And they, again, when there's a group of students that wants to have a voice and, and partake in something, we, everything we can to support those students in those groups. So, yeah, I mean, it's...
Yeah, I, I just don't want to invite more controversy and problems with the staff.
Make sure that you...
Not that we're supporting this or anything else. Yeah, make sure we have, figure it out seamlessly, look into it.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Well, I'll move to support the Day of Silence on Friday, April twelfth, in our district.
Okay, I've got a motion on the floor by Ms. Kwame, seconded by Mr. Barry, to approve the Day of Silence on April twelfth. All those in favor, all right?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven oh. All right, rolling into action item C, staff positions. In your packet, you do have a resignation letter for Willie Martholler of the mid-school.
You did get a letter?
Yes. Any questions regarding the proposed staff position? Thank you. March twenty-nine.
Yeah, is she, is she...
Why would someone fail on the G?
Her letter indicates she's relocated, she's got that resignation. Well, I'll move to approve the staff meeting as recommended. How many is this second?
Okay, I've got a motion on the floor by Ms. Kwame, seconded by Ms. Cummings to be, approve the resignation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven oh. Action item D, CISA two contract. We've already approved the CISA five contract. It's recommended we approve the CISA two contract as presented. There's information within your packet on CISA two. Any questions regarding to the CISA services? Again, we don't know the total of our contract until we select the services. Is that correct?
Well, it's IP-based, so as they finalize IP's for the rest of this year, over the summer, and the next year, those services are allocated accordingly.
Any questions?
Cummings will make a motion to approve the CISA two contract. I'll second that motion.
Okay, I've got a motion on the floor by Ms. Cummings, seconded by Ms. Kwame, to approve the CISA two contract as recommended. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven oh. Brings us to action item E, the Summer School Course Guide. We had a presentation earlier. The course guide is in your packet. Any additional questions on the Summer School Course Guide?
I think it looks like a really fun summer school. And Harper is definitely gonna be there.
I'll move to approve the Summer School Course Guide as presented. Cummings will second.
You got a motion seconded. Ms. Kwame, I'm gonna second it by Mr. Yurdis.
Oh, man, I got him.
All those in favor of approving the Summer School Course Guide as presented?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven oh. Brings us to, ah, discussion item F, the April organizational meeting. Are you gonna be there, Jim? I'll call it a close.
That's April twenty-second?
Yes.
Are we still having, sorry to interrupt, but are we still having next Mondays with Scott Carr or not?
Yes.
If that's not enough.
Upcoming events, Jim?
Yeah.
Four fifteen at four P M.
What is it?
Four, four P M. Four P M.
Got it.
So yes, April twenty-second at six-thirty. Uh, I have one board member's committee request. That's it. So please send over when you have time. Any other items to discuss for the reorg, reorg meeting?
Yes. Question, a couple of us have been on policy committee. Is that policy committee still standing into next year? Since we are moving our, we do.
It would make sense.
Aye.
All right.
Charlie, you can't get out of it that easy, okay?
We got work to finish.
All right. Got it.
All right, moving along. Discussion, graduation. It's currently scheduled for Sunday, June ninth at one P M with inclement weather. It will be moved to the Field House. Administrative staff would like to know if any board members or what board members would like to attend and assist in the ceremony. I can be here.
I can be here.
So you're free to, if you'd like to, just let the administrative staff know, Mr. Henning or Mr. Bartel.
I'm totally telling you I can be here. I can be there. So I don't have to remember. I'm gonna put it in my calendar.
I can let you know I'll have to check right after I'm here.
And again, you just would stand in the front and help handle the debates.
What time do you think it's at on the night?
One P M.
What?
What?
One P M.
We'd arrive by like twelve-thirty.
All right, discussion item G. Sorry, I was there. Page, Staff Recognition, recognition events, excuse me. So it's been scheduled for June seventh at eight-thirty A M. in the high school cafeteria commons area. Uh, all members of the school board are welcome to attend and assist in recognizing the staff. Notably, May sixth through the tenth is Staff Appreciation Week. And the district, as always, has several items planned for the staff for that week. Uh, if you want to attend, again, please let the administrative staff know. I've attended in the past. I don't give, give them there. If you can make it, it is a good event.
What day again?
June seventh at eight-thirty A M.
Me too.
I'm the one to talk.
Charlie's giving the speech, okay? All right. Another discussion item, the multicultural family night, as noted here, is May sixth at four-thirty to six-thirty P M. in the high school cafeteria. You are invited to bring a dish to pass, enjoy food fun, and connect with members of the community. Noted that it's a very good, very good event to attend. So again, May sixth, four-thirty to six-thirty P M. in the high school cafeteria. Discussion item J, Redefining Ready. Uh, as we, I'm sorry, H, I'm reading two different things. Scott Carr will be with us from CISA two to discuss the Redefining Ready Initiative. Uh, again, the date of that is Monday, April fifteenth, four P M. in this room. And we're gonna be talking about where we see the district going in the preparation of the kids. So please make sure that's in your calendar. Next Monday at four. Uh, discussion item on the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five budget. We heard the presentation previously. As standard operating procedure, we will see, we will receive, the board that is, numerous presentations on the budget as they continue to refine it, refine it, and present it. Any other need discussion there on the school budget? Any questions? Everybody's good? All right, action item L or J, depending on which you're looking at. I will make a motion to go into a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eight-five, current one, grant C for purposes listed on the approved agenda.
Cummings will second.
That is a roll call vote. Look, the records show the time is seven fifty-five.
Craig?
Craig, yes.
Kwame, yes.
Portman?
Snyder, yes.
Snyder, yes.
Cummings, yes.
Yurdis, yes.
All right, we are in a closed session. We'll give them ten minutes to tear down and we will get started. Thank you, everyone.